... over our wonderful four-day weekend that we just had. And it makes a lot of sense to me to bring that funds forward, but then again, I've also read the newspaper today. And I should never read the newspaper because all it does is make me upset. So I will go back to my final statement at the last Budget Committee meeting where I would recommend doing just the 50 cents right now. And being a, just to give the city a little bit more funding to make things balance a little bit, we won't be attacking much capital at that level, but we can start the process going forward. But I do firmly believe that the $1 that's left on the table should roll into the following budget, the 26, 25, 26 budget, yeah. And that's, I thought about it a lot the last couple of days, and that's where I would, we'll sit.
Thank you. Chris?
Well, I think I've been pretty consistent on my record on where I stand. I felt like, you know, I voiced several frustrations or weaknesses that I saw in the Dollars and Cents website that was created in that it took one or two clicks to get to a place and you kind of had to really look for it where our residents could specify that they didn't want us to spend any of the money. That option was not obvious, not easy to find. So I think the results that we got off the Dollar and Cents is not a clear picture. The News Register then promptly put up their own poll. They had more respondents than we had. And in their poll, 54% of those who responded did not want us to spend the money in the first year, which we did not do. They also had 51% of their respondents saying they do not want us to spend the money in any of the next three years. Not 50 cents, not a dollar, not a dollar fifty. I don't think the News Register readers represent a, across the spectrum viewpoint of our city, which I think is very telling. I think our perception that our residents are supporting us to spend this money is a faulty perception. And I think we would do well to find another approach to spending this besides sitting here as a group of 15 people making decisions on how we're going to spend a dollar fifty per thousand of our taxpayer dollars. I have been on record repeatedly saying that I believe taking money and spending it without permission is theft. And I do believe that. I think the way you do this right is you make the argument to the voters of what we want to spend that money on. And you let the voters tell you, yes, they're willing to give you their money to spend that money on the priorities that we think is best for them. I don't think we 15 people, or if I've got that number correct, should be making this decision on top of, I appreciated the breakdown that you gave us. It works out to the mean income being roughly $30 a month increase that they're going to be looking at on their tax bill. That's $30 that we're doing, plus another $10 increase when you look at the extra 50 cents or whatever it was that came from the Newburgh, or, excuse me, from the fire redistricting. They've got that increase as well. Then you add another $13 per month that we did with our city services fee. You start adding this up, and this is a substantial increase to people's income. I cannot be in favor of this. I would hope that we would really stop and think about what we're doing here, and particularly when you compare that to the sentiments that are coming in via email and the sentiments that we saw in that poll from the News Register. I could get to a yes, and I put that in my email before I couldn't make the last City Council meeting, or not City Council, but Budget meeting, if we would look at drawing down and removing the city service fee. But if we're going to keep both of these on the table, I can't do that, and I can't support that. And I would be encouraged if a citizen saw fit to put together a petition to stop us from doing it. Thank you.
Is Victoria present by Zoom, or? Victoria?
Yes, I am here. Hi, everybody. Sorry that I'm not there in person, which I was. I first want to say thank you to the staff because I thought the report that you all put together was excellent. I especially think it did a great job at explaining the change property ratio and how it is the fault of bad policy in Salem, unfortunately, that has led us to the situation that we're in. I think you did a great job of explaining how, even as McMinnville continues to grow with new development, that since 2020, the, that change property ratio has declined, which means we have more people that we are supporting with the city services, more people relying on city services, but we're getting less money to be able to cover that. And so I think it's pretty easy when you, I think everybody should look at that, to be honest, because I think it does a good job of explaining why we have a budget deficit and explaining that that's not a fault necessarily of the city council or of bad planning or poor budgeting over the historical life of the city, but some bad policies that have made it really impossible for the city to keep up the service levels that people expect at the rates of tax that are coming in. And because of that, as we've heard at a lot of our Budget Committee meetings where we've had to not fund projects that are seriously needed, especially the capital improvements like Lonnie was mentioning, that are necessary if we want the buildings that we have now to be able to continue and us not have to start over. But it's also necessary if we build some of the new, new buildings like the Aquatic Center that citizens have said that they want as well. So I just wanted to get on the record saying that. All that said, because of that, I don't think that we should go too long without levying this $1.50. But people are struggling right now financially in our community, and so I think waiting at least another year to levy any of the, of the $1.50 is where I would fall. But I, I am in favor, I think somebody else suggested in, on the Budget Committee of increments of 75 cents after that, and I would be in favor of something like that, assuming that the financial situation that people in McMinnville are in next year is better. We only luckily have to commit to one now, but I, I really think that there's a level of service that the people in McMinnville deserve, and the only way that we'll be able to do that at all going forward is if we use this $1.50. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'll tag on to the kudos for staff and Jennifer especially on the staff report, the amount of data and facts and the dialogue you walked us through was, was super helpful having, despite having been a part of the conversation for the years to date on this budget process. It was, it was all really good and informative to catch anyone up on, on where we're at. What really stuck out to me was the couple of underlying things, one of which was sort of that, the idea that staying at any current under-leveying rate does not pull us into a sustainable general fund, budget imbalance, and would continue to see year over year of, of a really tough budgeting cycle to be providing services and doing more for the community. And, and, you know, while we may take the hit, it's, it's important to, and it's important to put that investment in the future, and I believe that, that full levying rate and the services we can begin to be providing on a more sustainable basis while friction in the, in the immediate motion is inevitable, I think that's where we need to be going. I don't know if I'm on board with the immediate jump of a dollar fifty this first year, certainly would support 50 cents to 75 cents, but, but a progression to go forward. I think the case is laid in here for myriad different things we can do, investments we can make and activities to the, to the call for this committee to provide, you know, levy, levy-ing levels. You've had my answer there. A phasing in preference, sort of same, same there, 50 to 75% that first year, and trying to get back into it after a few years. And then investment priority feedback. My, my tantamount investment would be in, in facilities and parks and rec and culture for sure. Those would be the two areas I think we would need to be focusing in on this start. So that's, there's my feedback for tonight. And I guess the other one, if I may, if Counselor Graven can, doesn't feel like he's on the spot, talk a little about the discussion and dialogue that you led and had with the community about sort of our commitment during that fire process, because I feel like the, while I think we all wish the numbers were higher, I feel like we've stood up and delivered on a lot of our promises for dialogue and engagement and discussion. But I'd like to hear what you, you feel about that as well, so.
Go ahead.
Okay. I guess I feel I would be more comfortable with not using the whole $1.50, but maybe 50 cents in this first year. And I understand that nobody wants to sign up to pay more. At the same time, I feel like hearing, we get more information than a lot of our citizens get. We see the budget, we hear from the people who work for the city, we hear where there are pinch points for folks, and particularly things like deferred maintenance. I don't know a lot about it, but I feel like, I don't like to pay for my car oil changes, but if you don't do it for a long enough time, you're going to pay a much higher bill in the long run. And I feel like in some ways, it feels to me like we're at that stage with some of the things in our city, and I don't want to get to that stage. So I would be in support of, say, 50 cents this first year. And then the burden's on us to really make the case for what were we able to do that we wouldn't have been able to do otherwise, and how is that critical to the operation of our city?
Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. So, yeah, I definitely feel that we can't go above 50 cents if we're going to levy anything at all. You know, we didn't get great response data out of our Dollars and Cents campaign, not from lack of trying, but just from it being a complex tool that was harder to navigate than we had hoped for. And so for that, I refer you back to your January 18 Budget Committee with the Nelson Research Scientific Polling, which is where the 50 cent over a three-year period was scientifically polled throughout various demographics, and there was support for that throughout the city. And so that's where I would personally land. Even with that, I don't think it should just be a wholesale 50 cents for the next three years. I think we need to do a very strong outreach on what you're getting service level-wise as citizens, what we're improving, and also use some of this other data we have on what's important to citizens. We've definitely heard that parks are important for citizens, we've heard that safety throughout the city is important to citizens, and so prioritizing those initially when we're bringing some of this money back on and communicating that out to citizens. To Counselor Geary's question, you know, we did, throughout the Fire District effort, promised to freeze the $1.50 for the first fiscal year, which we did do. We also promised to reach out to citizens for engagement over this summer, which we did do. And, you know, hindsight's always 20/20. Do I wish that we had better engagement through those efforts? Yeah, but when you're trying something for the first time, I think it gives us the foundation to build on and really engage and build our communication strategies on why we're bringing this back on and what we're improving throughout the city by bringing it back on. But I definitely don't think there's appetite, for me personally, or in the general taxpayers' monthly budgets, to bring on a $1.50 right now or 75 cents right now. It's, it's just too much, too quick, and I think if we're looking holistically at what we want to do as a city in the next three, five, and 10 years out, we need to be cognizant of honoring our word to the voters and sticking to that 50 cents over the next three years and communicating why that is. And that way, we can move forward with our park and rec aspirations, other capital aspirations, the TMDL aspirations, and all the other things that we have on the plate and on the next 10-year horizon as a city. Thank you.
So when I was surveyed, I think that was two weeks ago, I recommended 75 cents and 75 cents over the next two years, because every time I look at, you know, when we read through the whole budget, it just feels like there are so many things that we are delaying, so many services that we want to provide. We listen to the staff, and they have so many things that they are hoping to accomplish and provide for us, and we, we don't give them the funds to do it. But, and while reading the responses from people and hearing people's opinions, I, I can be convinced that 50 cents is a wiser choice, 50 cents over the next three years. And so at this time, that's what I would recommend, 50 cents in the 24, 25. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Kelly?
Thank you. I've listened to everyone, and I know at least some of you feel probably the way I feel in what I'm going to say. Number one, in regard to Adam, I listened to a number of his presentations, and he was very clear after the initial couple of meetings when he talked to people, he was extremely clear that the council was going to probably keep the $1.50. Now, he was, as time went on, he was saying we'd phase it in, but he was very clear that the council's perspective was that the $1.50 would stay with the city. And I feel like that's something we all should internalize because that's important. We're not doing this just for the heck of it, we're doing it because people need services and we're not able to provide them. Having said that, the first year, we did not assess anything. I regard that as the first year. Ergo, the second and third year, I feel, the second year should be 75 cents, and the fourth year, or the second, third year should be the $1.50. That's how I feel. I feel strongly about it, and honestly, I had a husband who just about went through the ceiling on the first round on this, so, but I, he understood, and he understood a phased approach, too. So that's where I'm at. And I will be very blunt, Adam was extremely honest with the crowd.
If I could, I'd like to start with a couple of quick questions for Jennifer. Did this, I understand from what your memo said that the system supplied by the state basically discourages growth. It, it penalizes it by establishing a kind of a, an inverse relationship between revenue and growing communities. Is that fair?
I guess I'm, I don't quite understand. It, I don't think it penalizes grow, it, it penalizes the public entities that need to utilize the, the property tax revenue to deliver services, but I'm not sure that the property tax levels mean that developers won't grow, you know.
I was inartful in asking. I meant the effect on the city. And you've told me that the, I believe, that the effect is an inverse relationship, the more you grow.
Well, it, it will depend, I mean, there are, there are a lot of factors, and one of the major factors is what's happening in the housing market, the real market value. And so that's where the CPR, we're now below 50%. So if a, if a new home is valued at $500,000, its taxable value is less than 250. And that's locked in forever. So depending on just timing issues of when properties come online and what's happening with the externality of the real market values, you may be locking in large swaths of your tax base at, at these historically low values in terms of property tax. Or you might, you know, have a flip year, have a good year, and you lock in, you know, these tax rates at a higher place. But it's, it's been, over the last five years, it's gone from close to 60 down below 50 in Yamhill County. And I had not thought about the inequities in terms of county to county, but all of the counties touching us are, ours is the lowest, is the worst.
But isn't that just a function of property values increasing? So if we see a property value decrease, a bottoming like we saw in 2008, we're going to see that CPR go way back up? I mean, that's really, all that is, is a relationship between the real market value and the assessed value. And what makes the difference between that value ratio is how high is the market value. And so as market values increase, that ratio is getting, as a smaller number, but it doesn't change the real dollars coming in.
Yeah, it does, because of volatility.
No, it doesn't, because the-
Yes, it does.
That would not change a dollar on what's coming in, because we're assessed, we're paid, the taxes are being paid on the, on the assessed value regardless of that CPR.
But does it affect the assessed value?
No.
It artificially restricts the rate of growth.
The CPR is just an interesting calculation number.
It decouples it from the real market value. It artificially restricts the rate of growth relative to the rate of growth of costs.
The assessed value does, but the CPR is just an interesting ratio to, to take a look and see what's happening. It's not really what we're using to assess the taxes on.
We're not really talking about-
Could you, Jennifer, could you clarify that, please?
Well, the, the expert on this are, are assessors in county offices, and I just happen to come from a county and so have some level of understanding. So that CPR is applied to new properties that are coming on the rolls in that year. And so for, for every other property that already exists and already has a tax, an assessed tax value that can't increase more than 3%, those aren't changed. I think maybe that's what you're saying, but it locks in sometimes a, a very low value on new construction coming in in the year.
Exactly, because it's intended to try to make it so that new construction mirrors what existing prices are being paid by current taxpayers. And so regardless of, and that assessed value that we're currently paying off of is, is not changing, right? So the reason that number on the CPR looks different is because the difference is increasing. But at the end of the day, the assessor would have assessed essentially the same dollar value to the property. What's changed is their multiplying against a higher market value.
I would suggest, in the interest of time, that, and this is a really technical kind of question, if it's of interest, I can get together with the assessor with Yamhill County and maybe come up with some information to share about these particular technical details. Does that, I see some head nods. I can, I can work on putting together some further information on this to share. Does that, does that work?
Victoria has her hand up.
I was just going to chime in on this, but I, I like Jennifer's proposal, because I think it is, the way that I understand it is that you, the, the change property ratio is used to calculate the assessed value on the new build. So if you had a really big development come in, which we've seen a lot of throughout Yamhill County in recent years, all of those new properties are being assessed at a value that's lower than they would be if the prices of homes hadn't been inflated so much over the past few years.
That's a correct statement, yes.
And that, the problem with that is that you're incentivizing people to move here when they will be paying less money than they normally would have for the same level, and expecting the service levels in the city of McMinnville to remain able to meet all of that need. And that doesn't, that doesn't compute. It's impossible to do that. But I'd like to hear more from the assessor, so thanks.
Sorry. My apologies. I was driving down the street the other day, and I saw two single-axle dump trucks from Public Works, workers filling a hole in the street. And I swear, I don't think I've seen trucks like that, perhaps except in a museum. It's one of those things where the foundations that the staff presented, both in last year's budget presentation and in our discussions among ourselves about this question, there's no way, if people are not truly engaged, and I feel privileged that we got to hear what the situation is, and my modest effort to try to confirm it in the field is that it's not a story. It really is that way. This community needs investment to keep the ball rolling, so that the economy can be strong, so that the services and facilities are worthy of the citizenry who pay for them. I've reached the conclusion, just because I'd like to avoid the shock value of going with the whole dollar and a half, but the 50-cent increment and two subsequent visitations of that seem to me to be a worthy approach. And it seems to me that the current system is one that fails to recognize what rational consideration of the circumstances would and should be. And I see it happen in states across the nation where, at the state level, there are initiatives, or there are referenda, or there are legislators who would like to get their pound of flesh, and they establish a uniform formula, and it really doesn't reflect what each community needs. And I think, I'm always going to be a supporter of what the community needs. And how we determine that is by discussing it, as we did with citizens who took part in our open houses and our surveys. And with all due respect to the News Register, which I think is, is a very good newspaper, I could see the fudging in the language used, that we didn't really see what the questions and what the questionnaires that they administered really were. So I'm in favor of 50 cents for this next year, and that we continue to review this as we look forward, because we have needs in the community, serious needs.
Jessica?
Thank you. I want to thank Counselor Geary for asking Council President to weigh in on what was offered to the community during the levy, the Fire District levy, or, excuse me, the Fire District conversations, and for Committee Member Ernst's comments on the change property ratios, and Jennifer's clarification on that. In 1997, I don't know that we knew how significantly this impact, you know, the change property ratio is going to impact cities in terms of growth today, if we did hindsight 20/20 and all. That said, you know, the lack of participation or, or really usable function of the Dollars and Cents survey, I took it myself, and I guess I'm sad to say that maybe I'm one of the 42 participants, but it was difficult to use and navigate, so took it upon myself to just reach out, kind of on a grassroots level, to people in my ward, and found no one in favor at all of not levying any of the money. But instead, found that everyone was in favor, except for maybe one or two folks out of about 15 to 20 that were in favor of the gradual approach of the 50 cents a year. That said- That said, I do agree with Council Chenoweth, and we have maintained agreement by and large on the city services charge. That it's, I feel like, you know, all of us sitting in this room have to be good stewards of citizen funds. And I know that during a budget deficit, we were scrambling to find resources to make it possible to continue providing services. And the city staff and council and Budget Committee got very creative in efforts to do that. That said, by fiscal year twenty-six, I am strongly in favor of that, that city services charge going away.
Yeah, um, couple questions. Uh, last meeting, I think Chief Scales had spoken to the contract with the union coming up. What year is that coming up in?
I'll look.
Okay, great.
I think we have another year of that contract.
So it'd be, it'd be twenty-five, twenty-six, or twenty-
So we'd start bargaining around January of 2025.
Okay, so that would be in the twenty-twenty-four, twenty-five?
So this coming fiscal year is the last year of the, of the current contract.
Okay. And then the, the PERS possibility of taking advantage of that twenty-five percent from the state, that is in 2025 as well, potentially, right?
Yeah, they haven't announced a start date, but it could be in the next, 2025 could be next fiscal year or the following, so.
Okay, so it, it, we could either see some really potential benefits in the twenty-five, twenty-six year, or see some added costs of a new contract with unions coming up at that same time. So any of this discussion needs to take into consideration what those either benefits or, or continued costs would be. Either way, they would cost us money to participate in or, or change the, or, uh, meet some demands in contracts, I would assume.
Yeah, I mean, we will have to budget to the contracts, yes.
Yeah, okay. I think myself will echo pretty much everyone here. And, and one of the things that I find, you know, not only with these documents that we were given, but with the totality of the budget that we're given prior to making our final decision, I'm, I'm always so impressed by the different departments and them laying out all their costs and their needs. And in no way, shape, or form have we ever been told that they don't need any more money, that their budget is fine. So, um, I think we do need to look at using this full permanent rate? I'm assuming that permanent means that it's, it's locked in?
Permanent, it does mean permanent.
Okay, so there wouldn't be a vote on a permanent rate, right?
Correct. And the only thing that could change it is at the legislative level, if you change property tax.
Okay, thank you so much. Thank you, that's all I've got.
Thanks Chair Hart. I'm not going to say too much. I found myself pretty persuaded by Counselor Garvin, your comments, and Counselor Payne's comments in terms of the fifty cents. I think most residents, at least the ones that I've talked to, understand that there's a need for improving the service level, and that's something that's not going to happen for free, so. The one comment that I would like to make is regarding the city services charge. I would rather go up more slowly in subsequent years in the fifty cent assessments, the increase is up to five dollars. I'd rather go up more slowly in that than to get rid of the services charge. And the reason for that is that the services charge is more equitable for lower income households. And so if we, if we were to eliminate the services charge and instead offset that money with an increase in the, you know, the, the assessment fee, I think that would negatively impact poorer residents more. So my preference is that we keep the services charge and move up to the five dollar increment more slowly. Fifty cents seems reasonable. Uh, the one thing I'm definitely not going to be doing in this budget cycle is voting for a deficit budget. We've spent four years, five years trying to crawl out of a consistent shortfall. And we finally done it, thanks to the good work of, of the committee. So backtracking on that, doesn't seem like it makes much sense. I think people understand that we need to improve the service level in the city and that, that most residents are willing to pay for that.
Thank you. You know, as, as I looked at this issue, I kind of thought back to the Fire District process and to the city services, the process. And those were tough decisions to make. The Fire District was decided upon by the voters, City of McMinnville and those rural, uh, rural Fire District. And they voted in favor of the formation of that district with absolutely, in my mind, full knowledge of the effect that we have on everybody.
Chair Hart, can you move closer to your microphone?
It was very well publicized in the voter's pamphlet. It was, it was publicized in the News Register. There were tons and tons of letters to the editor, a lot of comments. And so the people, in essence, did, in fact, vote for an increase in their property taxes. And I, I feel very solid in making that comment because it's a fact, they absolutely did. No ifs, ands, or buts about it. They voted two dollars for, they knew that the Fire District was going to be able to levy two dollars, and they knew that the city would, in essence, have a buck fifty that formerly went to the Fire Department, and that the, and that the city would have the authority to levy that in the future. So there was a vote, and not, maybe not everybody understood it. Not everybody voted, but the people that did vote did vote that way for a self-imposed increase in their property taxes. And that, to me, means a lot. I've been on the Budget Committee for many, many, many years now, and I understand, uh, quite clearly the responsibility that the staff has shown, self-imposed furloughs, where they were the ones taking the brunt of that pernicious form of cost savings. I've seen the staff make really hard decisions about what they would propose to the Budget Committee and to the Council for their budgets. So the, and I've, after, you know, spending many, many years on this Budget Committee, I, I feel deep in my heart that these, the people that work for the city do a heck of a job and are very good stewards of the city's money. Some of the things that are going to be, the money that gets spent on, things like maintenance of vehicles, buying a new vehicle, they're not glamorous ways to spend money. And a lot of the increase in taxes that I think will probably result from, um, the media tonight will go to things that are hidden from the public view. Uh, and it's, so we're not, like, it's not like we're trying to, you know, promise them a, you know, a, a big show for the money. We're, we're making very difficult choices on the, on the budget. Another thing, I really appreciate the, the discussion about, what do you call this thing, the change property ratios, which I had had some kind of a glimmer of, but I never, and I, I don't know if I understand it now, but I sure had to know a lot more about it than I did before reading the staff report. And I, I live off of Baker Creek Road, and you hear people, and I've talked about the budget with people, and they say, "Well, gosh, with all this growth out on Baker Creek, the city must be rolling in money," and it absolutely doesn't work that way. Wish it did, doesn't work that way. You know, I find myself persuaded, at this point, I was, I, I not made up my mind. I think a fifty percent approach would be appropriate this year. We're not going to make, I don't know that you can really make a commitment for the following year and the following year at this point because of all the variables. So that's my personal position on this. And I will give the mayor the last word.
Thank you Chair, thank you Budget Committee members. Thank you for all of the additional work you've done. And to our staff for your tremendous effort in bringing forward all of the information we've asked for. You know, I think that the many years of work that went into setting up the Fire District really had two intended outcomes. One was to fix perpetual problems at the then Fire Department that couldn't be solved for lack of resources. That included understaffing, an aged fleet, decomposed facilities, and response times that were impacted by all of those things. And that's without mentioning how morale was affected. The other intent of setting up the Fire District was to liberate property tax dollars so that they could be reassigned to other city services. Other city services that were also struggling with budget shortfalls and that have been struggling with those budget shortfalls for decades. Decades in which they've been affected not only by a ballot measure at the turn of the century, the last century. It resulted in property tax almost freezes from the early 2000s. Enormous PERS increases and a tremendous jump in our population without additional income. When I talk about this with people, I often ask them if they would be living the same way now if they were operating off the same income they were making in 2001. These are difficult, and they are exceptionally unpopular decisions. And while avoiding taxation sounds good, it also clearly leads to an underfunded city. And an underfunded city leads to discontent. Discontent from our community, discontent among our staff, and discontent among elected officials who want to give the community what they're asking for. These underfundings lead to things and affect things like the state of all of our facilities, not only those that belonged to the Fire Department, now Fire District. They affect staffing levels for all of our core services, from library to public safety to public works. And an underfunded city costs taxpayers money too. Less predictably, you don't know who, or when, or exactly how much, or how. But when we're not providing those services, it ends up costing taxpayers money, often inequitably. We have been very transparent, that we were not giving up our taxing authority, but rather asking the citizens to tax themselves so that we could better serve the community. Because, because those same problems exist in other departments. We want to have the money to be able to provide the services at the level the community is telling us they want services provided. So, um, I agree with the general consensus that while at the city, could we put all of those dollars to work right away? Absolutely, we could. We've demonstrated that time and time again. And, um, that said, we're seeing our cost of living increases go up everywhere all the time, and it is difficult. And it, as we have heard from our executive team, we are nothing if not scrappy at the city of McMinnville. We have resourced, and while we could use and put those dollars to good work right away, I think a phased-in approach is much more sensitive to the real economic pressures that we are all feeling out in the world. And so I, I hear you have an overwhelming consensus for fifty cents. I don't disagree with Counselor Menke that year one was this last year, and we did zero for a year. But I hear a clear consensus and happy to support that consensus.
So I think we're moving on to asking for a motion. But before I do that, I want to ask the committee if you have any other remarks or concerns about the process and about how we're going to go forward.
Just add that throughout the process, I was very clear that the city was keeping the dollar fifty, and we were eventually going to bring that back online, and we're going to do that through an engagement effort. There was a couple slides dedicated to my PowerPoint presentation. I had every, every outreach event that I went to and spoke at that spoke to that. So there shouldn't be any confusion that the city planned on retaining its permanent tax rate. It wasn't if, it was when it was going to come back online and how it was going to come back online. So before you vote tonight, you can, you know, put that into your, your voting consensus.
Can I say one thing?
Go ahead.
Although it's been eloquently put out by several people, Victoria and Remy, the sooner we bring the full amount online, the better for the city. I mean, we're working with a deficit, basically, until we do that. So fifty percent, fifty cents this year is not going to do a heck of a lot. I'll just be blunt about it. So keep in mind that we need to move this along, people. Next year is a big decision, and I'd be really disappointed with everybody if you don't make a good one.
Thank you. Anything else before we entertain a motion?
Would it be possible to work our way on down? A motion for a dollar fifty, then a motion for seventy-five cents?
You can make any motion you like.
Yeah, so, so basically, someone, we would need to make a motion, and this motion is directed at, um, the upcoming fiscal year only. We're not looking, because again, the goal here is to provide staff with a clear message, clear direction on what to do with the proposed budget for the upcoming fiscal year. I think we could, you know, you could, again, if you want to make a motion, make a motion. I, I think that's the point.
I'd like to make a motion that we levy a perm, or a tax rate of four dollars and two cents for fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five, with an increase of fifty cents over this current fiscal year.
Second?
I clarified, the motion is actually that we're charging the staff to make a budget based on that, right?
And who seconded it?
Counsel Peralta.
Is there any words that needed to be added to that, David?
No, I think with that clarification, it covers the issue. But just to make sure that we're all on the same page, let me read it. This will be that the Budget Committee of the City of McMinnville recommends that staff prepare a budget for fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five that includes a property tax levy of, somebody give me the number again?
Four dollars and two cents.
Two cents.
Four dollars and two cents per one thousand of assessed taxable value for its general obligation levy.
That's correct. Is there, are there any, uh, kind of stepping out of Robert's rules here, does anybody have any question about what this mean? It in essence means a fifty pers, using fifty cents of the dollar fifty for directing the staff to use that fifty cents in preparation of, for the budget. We are not making any levying, we're not doing anything, adopting a budget. We are directing the budget to be prepared based upon that. Everybody understand? So with that, we have a motion pending. It's been moved and seconded that the Budget Committee of the City of McMinnville recommend to the staff that it prepare a budget for fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-four, uh, twenty-five that includes a property tax levy of four dollars and two cents per one thousand dollars of assessed taxable value for its general obligation levy. We're all clear? Does anyone need any further discussion on this? Oh, we'll go ahead and, and move for a vote, and I would-
Would you like Claudia to poll?
Uh, I would, yes. Thank you.
Committee member Watney?
Agreed.
Counsel Chenoweth?
Nay.
Committee member Ernst?
Aye.
Counsel Gary?
Aye.
Committee member Harmon Ferry?
Aye.
Counsel Menke?
Reluctantly, aye.
Committee member Maxfield?
Aye.
Counsel Payne?
Aye.
Committee member Mason?
Yes.
Counsel Peralta?
Aye.
Is that a aye?
It was.
Committee member Cunningham?
Aye.
Council President Garvin?
Aye.
Chair Hart?
Aye.
And Mayor Dropkin?
Aye.
I believe that that's all the business of the Budget Committee, so we'll adjourn, and I guess we'll see each other at the next meeting, which is for May 22nd.
Thank you. And we're about six minutes late in starting our regular meeting of the McMinnville City Council, but being that we've been here for an hour and we know some people are going to leave, we're going to take about a three to four-minute break, and we'll start the meeting at 7:10. Thank you very much. ...so we can start the meeting. Thank you very much. That was impressive. Good evening, and welcome to the regular meeting of the McMinnville City Council. Today is November 28th, 2023. I'd like to call the council meeting to order and request our city recorder, Claudia Sisnares, do a roll call.
Councilor Geary?
Good evening.
Councilor Menke?
Here.
Councilor Chenoweth?
Still here.
Councilor Payne?
Present.
Councilor Peralta?
Council President Garvin?
Here.
And Mayor Dropkin?
Here, thank you. And I see we have members of our fire district here with us tonight. Would you do us the honor of leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance? Thank you so much. We're now at the portion of the evening where we go to comments from community members. Any interested audience member is invited to provide comments, and any comment provided that requires some sort of follow-up will be assigned to a staff member. Anyone may speak on any topic other than a matter in litigation, a quasi-judicial land use matter, or a matter scheduled for public hearing today or at some future date. Comments are limited to three minutes per person for a total of 30 minutes. If you're on Zoom and you wish to speak, please use the raise your hand feature, or you can also send a chat directly to our city recorder, and we will announce you. Please be sure to announce your name and the city you live in for the record. Ms. Sisnares, do we have anyone signed up for public comment this evening?
No one has signed up, but we did receive an email from Jisun Lee, which I emailed to council, and it will be made part of the public record tomorrow.
Thank you, and I'm sorry, I don't have the Zoom open for this meeting yet, so I can't see if there's anybody there, but if you're on Zoom and you would like to make public comment, please raise your hand, and Claudia will let me know. And then, anyone on Zoom there? I see you, sir, don't worry, I will not skip over you.
Yes, but no one has raised their hand.
Okay, thank you, please, welcome. Thank you. When you're ready to make your comments, please be sure to announce your name and the city you live in for the record.
4004 Northwest Third Street, McMinnville. Last December, a year ago, the council notified the citizens that we were in some kind of financial trouble as a city, and that we were $300,000 in debt. I joined the effort to help work on this problem. I filled out a community survey online, I attended the community fair and submitted responses, and I joined one of the two focus committees. We met in August. There, the monitor for the meeting began the meeting with, and I quote, "We are here to help the city council on where to spend the city's surplus." I was surprised, matter of fact, I was shocked. I thought we were there to deal with financial difficulties, I had no idea we had a surplus. Hard for me to believe that in nine months, we had gone from a $300,000 deficit to a I think the council members need to explain to the citizens how, where, and when did we get into a $300,000 deficit? And you need to explain how, where, and when did we move to a surplus in millions? You want to know how we feel and what we should do about things? Ask us. We live in a democracy, in a democracy, people vote, especially for large or important issues. We are ready to tell you, we are ready to vote. If the council does not arrive at a decision to eliminate the $13 emergency tax that was put into place on our utility bills, now that the debt has been retired, then we need to vote on whether and how you should end the $13 emergency charge. We want to vote on whether or not the city can and should support a fourth major utility. And most importantly, we want to vote on what to do with the $1.50 per thousand taxing authority that is now moot since we've moved off of that into a new, different fire bond. We're waiting. We will be watching.
Thank you for joining us. Would anyone else in the gallery like to make any comment? Wonderful, thank you. If you'll come up here when you're ready to start your comments, we just ask that you state your name and the city you live in for the record.
Hi, good evening, everyone. My name is Brian Zawada, I'm resident of Amity. I spoke two weeks ago regarding the business that I own on Alpha Drive and Riverside. First of all, I want to thank South for your time after the meeting before executive session. Remy, thank you as well for the 40 minutes you gave me eight days ago on the phone to talk about this. I came to you because I was very...
You're talking to the mic, I can barely...
Oh, I'm sorry, let's try that again. Better? Okay. I came to learn a lot more about the challenges that we faced to deal with the camping RV homeless situation on Marsh Lane. And I definitely came away with a lot of information, starting with what you gave me in terms of some of the court constraints, and of course, some of the other issues that we face where our hands are very much tied. I also learned a number of things when we were talking eight days ago, that one of the biggest challenges we have in terms of, from a safety perspective, is the fact that when these camps become so large, there's a direct correlation to the amount of violence that takes place, both inside the camp and to those that are adjacent to those camps, including my business and the others that are adjacent to me as well. And in the course of thinking about that quite a bit, we talked also about, I can't remember the exact technical term of privatizing a street, I think there was another term for it, but allowing it to be privatized so as to be able to go ahead and issue constraints, if you will, on camping, and this was subject to one of the potentially upcoming debates, votes, or consideration by the McMinnville Water and Light Commission. I come here today because obviously the court issues that are present, the legal issues, many of the other programs that need to be put in place to solve this permanently are going to obviously be a long-term issue. But privatizing this street to remove the largest camp, as I understand it, in McMinnville, thereby having a direct correlation to the security of the citizens, clearly myself, other business owners in the area, my family that also works with me there, to me is an obvious solution. And I'm calling upon, obviously, as McMinnville Water and Light is a division of the city, you chair that commission, that this be added to the agenda for strong consideration to be able to remove that large camp, because it sounds to me like the best, most short-term solution to address this issue. Absent that, I see a significant exodus of businesses in that area, including my own, including a couple of others, because I consider it that much of a threat to us if action is not taken. So I look forward to being there for that future commission meeting, but I strongly recommend that it be added to the agenda in the December session. So thank you very much again for your time last week, and obviously for the phone call we had eight days ago.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else in the gallery that would like to provide public testimony this Please come up and join us, thank you. And just remind you to please state your name and the city you live in for the record, and I see you're already reaching for the mic, so thank you for that.
I'm Denise Wilson, I live here in McMinnville and work with Brian and my husband, as well as his son, his wife, and another couple. So I just wanted to emphasize the danger that we, we were very fortunate that these shootings that happened on the nearby building next door to us were after harvest. The shots that were fired, the seven shots that were fired at the next-door building from across the street where the homeless camp is, could have easily severely injured any of us. My husband and Brian are both veterans. We had a, one of the women working is pregnant, and her husband will be a new father for the first time, and their 21-year-old son. So these are the real people that are, you know, taxpaying, people that are concerned about our safety, about our lives, working here, across the street from this situation, potentially very, very harmless, are harmful and dangerous for us, as well as the people who are working in the nearby buildings as well. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Would anyone else in the gallery like to provide public comment this evening? Is there anyone on Zoom that has their hand up at this time?
No.
Thank you, and do we have anyone on the phone? Okay, thank you all so much. We're now going to go into the first presentation for the evening. This is McMinnville Housing Rehabilitation Community Development Block Grant Presentation. I'd like to call on our Community Development Director, Heather Richards, to present and introduce Mark Irving from Housing Authority of Yamhill County and Housing Rehabilitation. Thank you.
Good evening, mayor and councilors. I'm Heather Richards, Community Development Director for the City of McMinnville, and with me is Mark Irving, who's a Housing Rehabilitation Specialist with the Housing Authority of Yamhill County. I'm going to share my screen with you. We're here to talk about an exciting program. It's an opportunity to apply for funds to help our community members who are low-income households who are, have houses that are facing safety assessability or imminent livability issues with their home in terms of getting grant funds to them for housing repair. What that does is it keeps families in their homes, especially as we're going through a housing crisis in our community right now. So it's a partnership with the Housing Authority, it's the Community Development Block Grant Program that the state offers, they do a biennium application process. We are coming to you to talk about applying for funds from the state for 2024 for a housing rehab program. It would be a partnership with Yamhill County Affordable Housing Corporation, that's with the Housing Authority of Yamhill County. I serve on the board for that corporation and Mark's staff for it. It would be a $500,000 grant for helping people rehabilitate their housing, and it's an ongoing successful program. So this is a program that's been in place with the Housing Authority since 1980. It's been funded with CDBG funds since 2016. It started with a program in Newburgh, and then it came to McMinnville in 2019. In 2021, it went back to Newburgh. What happens is the Housing Authority partners with the two larger cities in the county to apply for the funds, so the city needs to apply for the funds. Then the majority of funds are invested in those two cities, so the primary applicant, but they're also the opportunity for homeowners in the smaller cities surrounding both Newburgh and McMinnville and Yamhill County to apply to participate in the program as well. And we alternate between Newburgh and McMinnville, so this next year is McMinnville's turn. The Board for the Yamhill County Affordable Housing Corporation had a discussion about doing this again in McMinnville and voted to do so. Previously, the funds have been used primarily, well, solely, for manufactured homes, but what we're recommending for this next... what we're recommending for this next round is that we actually look at all housing types as being qualified housing for this program, so that we can ensure anybody who is, who meets the criteria for low-income housing and is in a situation where they need immediate funds to keep livability in their home, that we would be able to help them. So talk a little bit about the 2019 program. We were awarded $500,000 for that program. The Community Development Department works in partnership with the Housing Authority on implementing and administering the program. At that time, the goal was to assist 55 low-income households and 100 individuals with critical repair items. The final results were a little less than that due to the cost of repairs increasing over that two-year time period in which we administered the program, but we were able to rehabilitate 39 homes and impact a total of 69 people. Thirty-three of these homes, 84% of them, were owned by elderly residents. 22 of the households, 56% had disabled occupants. Seven of the households, 17% had dependent children. And 40% of the households had extremely low income, 35% were very low, and 25% were low income. So these funds are going right into our underrepresented populations in our community. The types of projects that we funded were roof repairs, so there were 13 different projects where the roofs were literally leaking into the, into the homes. We also funded porches and wheelchair ramps for many of the homes as well. We funded heating and cooling systems that were broken. We repaired or replaced showers that either needed to be modified for accessibility or had potential plumbing and mold issues associated with them. We did, 16 of the homes had plumbing issues that were repaired, and we, water damage contributed to 32 of the homes that had grant funds provided to them. Eighteen of the homes had broken or defective windows or doors that needed to replace, which were both ventilation and safety issues. And then 10 of the homes had damaged flooring that needed to be replaced. I had the opportunity to tour the homes at the end of the program with the Housing Authority and visit with the families who all benefited from the program, and it was a remarkable experience just how much this really, in the grand scheme of things, small investment in these properties were such a big impact to those families in terms of being able to stay in those homes. They were facing the situations where they were going to have to leave the homes because of the deterioration of the, of the housing itself, and this allowed them to stay in it. And in our current market, where we don't have a lot of affordable housing, the stress of trying to figure out how they were going to find housing if they lost their existing home was overwhelming to them. The average household size that was served was two people. This shows what, and we served those who are in extremely low, very low and low income levels, and this shows what they would, what they made per year during the program, so these are 2020 numbers. But for extremely low households, it was $23,200 or less per year. In terms of affordable housing, as you know, HUD defines affordable housing as people paying no more than 30% of their income for gross housing costs, and that includes utilities. And to put it in perspective, what those numbers mean in terms of the income levels for, for the two, for two people, and what they can afford, the extremely low household can afford a rent of $406. The average space rent in our manufactured home parks was $729. So being able to stay within their existing home was critical for these households. The apartment rent was $1,540 for a two-bedroom apartment in 2020. So what we are doing, the Housing Authority of Yamhill County is continuing to explore new innovative ideas in terms of trying to bring affordable housing online, in terms of supply. You know about the Stratus Village project that has been approved through land use and also approved for funding, then that's 175 units, and they are looking at many other creative opportunities to increase supply. They're also partnering with local governments and agencies throughout Yamhill County to research more affordable housing options. They've been very open to exploring any types of programs that we're bringing to them as ideas to explore to increase our housing supply. But as they're doing that, we also have a commitment to help stabilize the low and extremely low-income families that are in their current facilities and homes until more permanent affordable housing solutions can be found. So the 2024 program, they asked for that, will be $500,000 as well. Again, the change here is we're opening it up to all housing types and not just manufactured homes. There are currently 123 households on a waiting list for the program here in McMinnville. The project focus, the types of projects that will be funded will include immediate health issues, safety issues, and accessibility issues. For your purposes, it is a City of McMinnville application. We will need to host a public hearing on January 23rd, 2024, to consider the application and also to appoint a certifying officer. I was a certifying officer back in 2019. The Board voted to recommend that I serve in that role again in this program as well. So with that, I want to turn it over to Mark Irving if he wants to add anything to it, or if you want to ask any questions of us.
Thank you, Heather. As well stated, I think she covered, covered the program really well. Thanks for having me here tonight. My first city council meeting in McMinnville, so my name's Mark Irving. I would, I've been with the Housing Authority for about five years and been serving as the lead person in the Housing Rehabilitation Department for just about a year now. Biggest thing I can emphasize and add to this is how life-changing, the grants are $15,000. That was the cap per family in this last cycle that we're finishing up in Newburgh. And $15,000 to you and I might be a used car, or it's a substantial amount of money, but still, it's, this is life-changing money for these folks. Going into a house that, you, I was shocked. I've been in real estate since 95, and I was still really shocked with some of the things we were able to do with $15,000. And if we can proceed forward to this, I think it'd be a great opportunity for the citizens who qualify for the program and sustaining that long-term goal of affordable housing. If you have any questions?
Thank you. Thank you so much for making the trip here today and for the work you do on this program. And Director Richards, thank you for bringing this forward. I remember how popular this was and the really incredible impact that it had. Does the council have any questions? Just one. Counselor Peralta, and then Counselor Menke.
Thank you. First, Mark, thank you for your work, helping to provide housing and do the rehabilitation. Housing Authority is such a wonderful partner for our community. Is $500,000 the maximum that we can request, and is there any requirement for a city match of any kind?
No, there's no, no matching fund requirement. 500 is the maximum for the Community Development Block Grant. As a matter of fact, there's some strings attached to that, but nothing that would impede our program.
Thank you.
Is it going to be 15,000 is the max for individuals this year, or will it be higher?
That's a, that's a good question, Kelly. Because we started, we started at 10 several years ago, I think it was, then went to 12, then it went 12.5, and then to 15. And depending on how the things turn out in the next year, because really, the funds wouldn't be distributed until June or July, really, or we'd start spending the money if we were able to get the grant. And at that point, we could evaluate what the bids are coming at. But 15 seems to be a pretty good number right now. And we were able to get some amazing stuff done. But we have to remember, we were only focused on manufactured housing, and-
A little different with regular housing.
I think that you can do a lot more with a little bit less on a manufactured home. A roof, for example, is half a size on one.
Well, I'm thrilled that you're expanding it, but, to different types of housing, and I thank you both for your work on this, Heather and you. Thank you all so much.
It's been a pleasure.
Yeah, and just to follow up, in terms of process, what will happen is, as, as the applications come in and Mark works with the families, he'll bring to the Board the YC, I always get the acronym wrong, but the Yamhill County-
Affordable Housing.
Affordable Housing Corporation. I'm a great board member. I've been on the board for-
I get it wrong.
-seven years, I can't remember that. But anyways, he'll bring to the Board, we're seeing, you know, these types of issues occurring in the applications, the bids are coming at this level, do you want to consider changing the maximum grant allocation? So it is a board decision, it goes through that process of, you know, just like you do as a decision-making body, it works through the process of thoughtfulness as to what makes the most sense and how to leverage the funds the most effectively. And so we will be, we go through that each grant period, I've seen it happen at the board level based on what's coming in.
Thank you.
Counselor President?
Just excited to see this program still continuing on, and you always have a fan in me, I know what a direct impact it could have over 20 years ago when it paid for window replacement at my mom's house, as a single mother with three boys, making $30,000 a year, so you always have my support.
Counselor Chenoweth?
Thank you for all that you guys are doing. I really think this program is a neat program. I would be remiss not to point out the bipolar nature of our conversations. We seem to have a constant stream of being concerned about not having affordable housing while at the same time consistently increasing the cost of housing. That seems like a very odd back-and-forth conversation taking place in here, but it's consistent. What exactly is the cost to the city of this program?
Yes, I'm glad you asked that, I should have said something. So this is the, historically, with this grant program, we did not take any administrative funds for administering the program. The city offered that administration as sort of in-kind support. The Housing Authority does take administrative funds, you're allowed so much, I think it's, is it 15%? 10?
Right.
There's a percentage you're allowed to take for administrative funds that is, that is taken by the Housing Authority to support managing the program, running the program, and then the city does donate, you know, our services, which would be my department and the finance department team, the finance teams department, to do what we need to do on our end. That's what we've done in the past.
So that means we're, how much time, how much dollars, what, what does that actually as a cost?
I could probably calculate that and bring it to you for the public hearing in January. I'm not comfortable speaking for Jennifer's team without having that conversation with her.
I think it would be good for transparency. I'm not going to oppose this, I think it's a great idea, but I think it's good for the citizens to understand what we're doing and everything we're doing. So if you can bring that forward, that'd be great.
Thank you. Any other counsel comments? All right, thank you very much, greatly appreciated. Moving into advice and information items, we'll start with reports from counselors for committee and board assignments. Counselor Chenoweth, may I start with you?
Mayn, I have nothing to report.
Thank you. Counselor Gary?
Nothing from MIRAC and DEI AC between meetings. Affordable housing, we heard from Heather on a legislative update for development-related topics, but being in flux, it was just, it's merely an update to see how that came together. And then we got to see just an Hall of Fame spreadsheet from Tom Shower on density bonuses. So more to come on that. And then Tuesday, this coming Tuesday, we will be having the Stormwater/Wastewater Project Advisory Committee Meeting Number Two going on over there at the Wharf Tuesday at 3 o'clock, I believe, so there you go.
Thank you very much. Counselor Peralta?
November 20th, the MCM 11 Board met, discussed a bunch of things. Studio usage is up significantly. They're having some issues with building security, looking to purchase some new equipment to improve that. And as I've mentioned in the last couple of meetings, they're, they voted to ask for a reallocation of the Cable Access Management Agreement from the current 45 to 55 split to a 60-40 in favor of MCM 11.
Thank you. Counselor Payne?
Nothing to report, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Menke.
Well, there is a meeting tomorrow night for, on the Foxridge Road PAC, and on Thursday, there is a meeting of the Third Street PAC that will be discussing various topics in regard to Third Street, trees being one of the big ones.
Use your microphone.
Thank you.
Oh, I'm not talking to my mic, I'm sorry. Do you all get that?
No.
Okay. There's a meeting tomorrow night at, I believe it starts at 6 o'clock or 6:30 at the Police Department, and it's about the Foxridge Road. It's hopefully one of the, near the end of meetings on the Foxridge Road property PAC. And on the, on Thursday at 3 o'clock to 5, I believe we're top, is the Third Street Discussion Project, and they're going to be talking about trees. I know that's one of the big hot items on it, and various other things. So if you're interested, please tune in. I know there's a number of counselors that attend those meetings. I do too. And I think that's the third meeting that they've had. In regard to YCAP, they're currently working on an $889,000, an $889,000 grant from Yamhill County HHS for electrical upgrades, as well as Food Bank On-Site Park, On-Site Pantry, On-Site Pantry. So they're trying to get some money there. Waiting on YCCO word regarding the share funding request, still waiting on a contract for House Bill 5019 funding, which they had submitted some time ago. Social media has expanded and is, there's a, they've done a real analysis of it, there's a number of things that they feel they're really doing well. A lot more people are getting the word out about what's happening with YCAP. There's a $50,000 grant request from Spirit Mountain for Community Fund for Youth Outreach, and ADP Newburgh costs have, let me see, ADP, Newburgh costs have increased significantly due to the land use process. This is, yeah, in Newburgh. Still projected to complete the project timely, though, by drawing from other YCAP resources. And the Finance Director transition, they're in the midst of interviewing this month, and hopefully, we will have a new Finance Director by January.
Thank you very much. I'm going to kind of continue off of that, and for my report tonight, I'm actually just going to announce a volunteer opportunity that I think is really important for the community to hear. If you know what the point-in-time count is, it is a day, one day every year where members of the community and staff go out to try to assess the total number of unhoused people living in the community. This is done for many reasons. One is that it informs funding, federal and state funding, and how that comes to both, well, primarily through to the county, but it also tells us demographic data, things that we need to know, like what's causing the homelessness in our community, where are those largest populations, what will help change the situation for people that are experiencing homelessness, how can we avoid more people becoming homeless? And it, it takes a tremendous volunteer effort because the count is done for the county as a whole. And so it's done through a couple of different ways. One is that there are drop-in places where people can come to be counted, but then there are also volunteers that go out to known camps to participate in that count. So again, the reason that this is so important is that it's hard to solve a problem if you don't know what the problem is. Our last point-in-time count that we have results for was in 2020. At that point, we had a count of 1,500 unhoused or precariously housed individuals living in our county, tremendous number. That, again, dictates federal and state funding that will come here to address these issues. And if, if you think that we can address these issues without financing to do so, then I'm sorry, you are gravely mistaken. And so I would really ask out to the community, especially those who want to see how we can improve this situation, work on this situation. This is really a community effort, and this is a very important starting place. The count is conducted through YCAP, and so if you would like to sign up to be on a- to be on a street outreach team, or if that's something that's outside of your comfort level, if you wanted to do flyer distribution, they also need volunteers to do flyer distribution, or if you wanted to work on a drop-in team, all of those are options, and they really do need a robust volunteer corps. Again, an undercount ultimately means less funding going into programs, especially programs administered by the county, to address these issues. And I keep saying the county and pointing over here because we're joined tonight by our County Commissioner, Mr. Johnston. Thank you for being here. And also because County oversees Health and Human Services where a lot of that funding goes. So to sign up to volunteer for the Point in Time Count, please contact Amber Hansen-Moore at YCAP. Her telephone number is 503-687-3185. Or you can reach her at amberh@yamhillcap.org. Thank you. We'll go to department heads for reports.
Can I ask a quick question, Mayor?
Yes, you may. Sorry, it was sound.
It's okay. Do you know if the count is still planned for the last Wednesday of January?
Oh, thank you. Yes. It is Wednesday, January 24th. I don't, the hours are not on this flyer, so I, I'm not sure. But I, it's usually a large majority of the day, so, or all day essentially. And so people are flexible to volunteer in the hours that work for them.
Thank you.
Council President, did you want to add something?
My reports.
Oh, my goodness. Yes, thank you. Please do.
Not much to add, but no YCOM meeting, no Airport Commission meeting, Fire District things are continuing to move forward. Hopefully we'll have that IGA in front of the council by December 12th to vote on, so we can move forward with that and still have that January 1 separation. And we have a conditional contract with our Fire Chief candidate, so they're going through backgrounds and medicals, and then we'll make an official announcement once they're through all that. And Visit McMinnville, if City Manager Towery would like to enlighten us on that. I wasn't able to attend that last meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Towery?
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the council, a couple of items. Just a reminder, this is Ann Pagano's last week as Public Works Director here at the city of McMinnville. We wish her well in her move back to the Upper Midwest. There's a more detailed email in your inbox today. If you haven't gotten a chance to read it today, I appointed James Ofton, City Engineer, as the interim Public Works Director. In addition, Matthew Bernards will be taking on some engineering services, management responsibilities, and additional weight to the whole engineering and, and Public Works Management Team. We'll also be relying more heavily on contracted resources to support some of the technical engineering work to keep our programs and services and projects underway in the interim. So I don't have a specific report on Visit McMinnville. There was a lot of conversation about sort of the trends of the visitor industry and, and, and sort of community perspective on, on the visitor industry and how McMinnville is in a pretty healthy place in terms of perspective on visitor industry. But like many other communities, we're sort of seeing a declining support for the visitor industry, and it will challenge Visit McMinnville to do a better job in partnership with the city, talking about the impacts of the tourism industry on local residents and the benefits that that may bring to the community as well. So more to come from Visit McMinnville. You'll hear more during their annual report later this spring on that topic. That's all I have tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Kavisman. I assume you're here for later, so.
That's correct.
And I see you've joined us so frequently now that you have your own nameplate.
You know, for, for good or ill.
Good or ill. City Attorney, David Leitenberg.
Thank you, Mayor. Nothing to report this evening.
Thank you. Community Development Director, Heather Richards.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to give a shout out to the Community Development Department team. A lot of people may not know this, but the Sequoia Tree Lighting is managed by the team in our off hours. So we do it as a volunteer project and a gift back to the community, screwing in light bulbs, arranging all the different things for that. So I wanted to give a shout out to them for their continued efforts for that project. I think everyone enjoys it. And then also wanted to let you know, we have five planner positions at the city. Two are currently empty. We'll be doing interviews, and they've been empty for a while now. We'll be doing interviews for those two positions next week, so I'm hoping we'll get up to a full team here soon.
Thank you very much. Finance Director, Jennifer Cuellar?
Yeah, I would just like to mention that applications for Budget Committee members are due by Thursday, November 30th. We have two vacancies, or two folks would be terming out, and so we will be interviewing folks, I believe, in January. And at this stage, I have five applications in hand and hope to get a few more before the deadline hits. So if anyone has any questions, you can go to the Finance page on the city website. Information is there. My phone number and my email is there. Feel free to reach out on that.
Thank you very much. City Recorder, Claudia Cisneros?
Yes, I want to remind everyone that we will have an all-day City Council Goal Setting Retreat on Saturday, December 9th, so a week from this Saturday. And an agenda and PAC will be posted later this week.
Thank you. And IT Director, Scott Burke?
Thank you, Mayor. Nothing to report tonight.
Thank you. Now moving to our Consent Agenda. Have members of the council been able to review the agenda? And does anybody wish to have anything pulled off and heard in its regular place on the council meeting?
Move to approve the consent agenda.
Second. I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented from Counselor Peralta and a second from Counselor Manke. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And all those opposed, say nay. And the consent agenda is approved unanimously. Thank you. Now moving to resolution, we're going to consider Resolution Number 2023-63, a resolution of the city of McMinnville electing use of the Sequential Urban Growth Boundary Amendment Process in ORS 197.626/3. And I'd like to call on Heather Richards, Community Development Director, to present.
Yes, thank you, Mayor and councilors. This is a resolution that states that the city of McMinnville will elect to use a Sequential Urban Growth Boundary Amendment Process per ORS 197.626 subset 3. That's a, in this, in the state law, it states that if a city more than 2,500 people is considering expanding its UGB by more than 50 acres, it can elect to move into this process. It's a new process for Oregon in the last couple of years. And what it allows us to do is to submit a needs analysis, which you will be looking at shortly here in this meeting. And typically, when you submit a needs analysis, you have to also submit how you're going to meet that need in terms of the, in terms of the need for the future. And usually that is with an urban growth boundary amendment. If you don't have the time to put all that together, this allows the city to do it incrementally in a work program. So what the resolution does is it, it elects to utilize that program per the exhibit, which is a draft work program. We have shared that with DLCD. What I passed around tonight is a letter, an email we got from them that supports the work program. They still have some edits they want to make to it, and they haven't gotten it officially from us. But we wanted to make sure we were on the right track with them. It authorizes the city staff to undertake all the steps necessary to effectuate the work program. It authorizes the city manager to sign all the documents necessary to allow the work program to move forward. And the cost of this, we anticipate that the cost of this work program, which includes land use efficiencies in 2024, and then if there's still need demonstrated after doing land use efficiencies, a UGB alternatives analysis in 2025, we anticipate that that, that program is going to cost about $500,000. We do have a grant from the state of $150,000 to help offset those costs. Oh, and lastly, Yamhill County also needs to participate in the support of this work program. And the Yamhill County Planning Director will be taking this to the Board of Commissioners on December 21st.
Thank you. And I will open this up for council discussion. Counselor Manke?
I'd like to make a motion that we approve this resolution to accept the, the progressive nature of this. Makes it a lot easier for the, for the staff to handle this load of work, and I think it probably saves money in the long run.
Thank you. I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
A motion from Counselor Manke and a second from Counselor Chenoweth. All those in favor, please, well, I should ask, is there any additional council discussion before I call for the vote? Or questions? Okay. Thank you. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. And those that oppose, say nay. The resolution has passed unanimously. We will now consider Resolution Number 2023-65, a resolution adopting, adopting a budget amendment for fiscal year 2023-24 in the General Fund and Information Services Fund. And I'd like to call on Jennifer Cuellar, our Finance Director, to present. Thank you.
So thanks. Good evening. This is a proposed budget amendment to the current year's 2023-24 budget in order to do essentially a couple of things. One is to move forward more quickly than we, we knew at the time we were putting together the budget originally on bringing on board a halftime emergency manager position. You all may recall that it was one of the 28 projects approved by this body to, to use the American Rescue Plan Act dollars that came in a couple of years ago at this point. So this would allow appropriations to move forward on that for half a year of this year. Then secondarily, we have a, a couple of grants that have come in for the Community Development Department that were not appropriated, and we didn't know about them at the time that we were putting together the budget. So this, this action will allow us to bring, bring that funding on board and then appropriate the expenses so that they can start moving forward on that work. So I'm happy to take any questions or...
Thank you. Questions? Not hearing any, I would entertain a motion.
I move we accept this budget amendment as proposed.
Second.
I have a motion to approve Resolution Number 2023-65 by Counselor Manke and a second by Counselor Geary. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, say nay. And the, the resolution is adopted unanimously. Thank you. Now moving into our ordinances for the evening, the next two ordinances will be read under one staff report for consideration. We will consider the first reading with a possible second reading of ordinance number 5139, and we will consider the first reading with a possible second reading of ordinance number 5141. Does any counselor need to declare an actual or potential conflict of interest or recuse themselves regarding this ordinance? Not hearing any, I would call on Heather Richards, our Community Development Director, to present. Thank you.
Okay, so we're talking about our growing McMinnville mindfully, what we call our Part Two Program. You have Dockets G1-20 and G3-20. That's our Housing Needs Analysis and our Economic Opportunity Analysis. Tonight's consideration is adopting those. It also considers adopting an updated McMinnville Urbanization Report. That essentially is a summary of those two documents, which are fairly, not that interesting to read and very in-depth documents. So the Urbanization Report is really meant to be a user-friendly summary of those two documents. The reason we're doing this is per ORS 197.296, we need to submit a Housing Capacity Analysis, that's how it's now called in the state law, what we know as a Housing Needs Analysis, and a buildable lands inventory by December 31, 2023. So McMinnville's identified in the state law to need to adopt that and submit it to the state for consideration. At the same time, we had been working on an updated Economic Opportunity Analysis, which includes a public land needs analysis, and those are also ready to submit. So our recommendation is to move those both forward. These meet your city council strategies that are in the MacTown 2032 Strategic Plan, both the goal of housing, which is looking at creating diverse housing opportunities that support great neighborhoods, and also your goal of growth and development character, which is to guide growth and developments, guide growth and development strategically, responsibly, and responsibly to enhance our unique character. There are two ordinances in front of you tonight. City Council will be choosing one to approve if you choose to move forward. The ordinance numbers are 5139 and ordinance number 5141. Each ordinance adopts the following documents: the Urbanization Study dated November 2023, that is the summary report, the Housing Needs Analysis dated November 2023, the Economic Opportunity Analysis dated November 2023, and a Findings and Decision Document for Dockets G120 and G320. The ordinances also amend the McMinnville Comprehensive Plan, Volume 1, and they repeal ordinances number 4746 and 4976. Where they are different, though, is that the Urbanization Study, the Economic Opportunities Analysis, and the Findings and Decision Document are different for each of the ordinances in the following way. Ordinance number 5139 includes the analysis that demonstrates a need for additional land outside the urban growth boundary of 202 acres for housing, 127 acres for employment land, which includes 29 acres for industrial, and 98 acres for commercial land, and then 32 acres for public and institutional land need, for a total of 361 acres. Ordinance number 5141 has the same acreage needs, except for under employment land need, it has an increased acreage need of 159 gross buildable acres for commercial land need, which equates to an overall land need of 422 acres. The reason why these two are different is, if you remember, when we came to you on October 10th, we talked about the fact that there are two issues that have been highlighted in the Economic Opportunities Analysis that the Planning Commission wanted you to consider, which is acreage associated with retail leakage and acreage associated with other needed sites calculated separately from the average employment densities. So that's, that's the acreage needed for those types of developments that have been identified in our Economic Development Strategic Plan that are anomalies in terms of how you apply employees. A great example of that is the Evergreen Campus with the museums and the water park. Ordinance number 514, so ordinance number 5139 removes the acreage associated with those two elements. And then ordinance number 5141 retains the acreage associated with those two elements. So it equates to 61 acres. In terms of the amendments that you're making to the Comprehensive Plan tonight, adopting the Housing Needs Analysis and the Economic Opportunities Analysis will amend McMinnville's Comprehensive Plan, Volume 1. Volume 1 is our background information, so that's the data that supports the policies. Volume 2 is the goals and policies, and then Volume 3 is our implementing ordinances. And then it repeals the ordinances number 4746 and 4976 because those two ordinances are what adopted the previous Housing Needs Analysis and are what adopted the previous Housing Needs Analysis and Economic Opportunity Analysis. You're also adopting the Urbanization Report as a standalone document, and then you're adopting a findings document that has findings of fact, conclusionary findings, and a decision for dockets G120 and G320. Those demonstrate compliance with state law, with our Comprehensive Plan, and our Comprehensive Plan goals and policies. We came to you on October 10th per our zoning ordinance, which says, for legislative projects, this is a legislative project, so initiated by the city, that the Planning Commission makes a recommendation to you. You then consider the recommendation and decide if you want to move forward with an ordinance, go into a public hearing process, or refuse to adopt the recommendation by the Planning Commission. At that time, you decided you did not need to go into a public hearing process, and you wanted to move forward with an ordinance consideration. The Planning Commission recommendation to you was to reduce the park land need identified in Appendix E of the Economic Opportunity Analysis by 62 acres due to a mathematical error that had been done in the data collection. And so, that is represented in both of your Economic Opportunity Analysis for both ordinances. Then they also said you should consider the removal of approximately 49 acres of commercial land need associated with the site-specific needs identified in the MacTown 2032 Economic Development Strategic Plan, that's Table 58 of your Economic Opportunities Analysis, and that you should also consider the removal of approximately 12 acres of commercial land need associated with the retail leakage analysis of the Economic Opportunity Analysis. So, those are those two separate elements that add up to 61 acres. In terms of the details in front of you, for the record, we're working off of a population forecast for a 20-year planning horizon of 2021 to 2041, for future population of 47,498 people, and also a 2021 to 2061 planning horizon to do an urban reserve area in the future for a future population of 62,803 people. These documents were first drafted in 2019 and 2020, and then they were updated here in 2023 to include our new UGB amendment that recently was acknowledged by the state in 2021. It included development through December 31st of 2021, and then updated our housing capacity and our building lands inventory with House Bill 2001, which is the missing middle housing, so increased density assumptions. We also decreased density assumptions in our rural residential area, which is land that was brought in in 2003, and in 20 years is not annexed into the city and developed at an urban density. There's usually three steps to your growth planning. The first step is the identification of need. Then after you identify the need, you have an analysis of your existing UGB, and there are ways to look at land use efficiencies within your existing UGB to accommodate that need. Those are local decisions and local value systems that go into that discussion, and then based on that, if there's still need identified after going through land use efficiencies, you then go through a UGB alternatives analysis. An alternatives analysis is looking at land within a mile buffer of the city's current UGB boundary, and going through that whole analysis as to the calculations associated with the soil classifications and high-value farmland and things of that nature, much like what we did with our 2020 UGB amendment. So, this process is just the land need process, as described in the previous resolution discussion. We have not done the land use efficiencies. So, any number identified with need presumably will probably go down as we go through the land use efficiencies discussion in 2024. And then, if there's still need after that, those calculations and decisions, we will go through an alternatives analysis in 2025 through mid-2026 based on that work program. The decision-making process to get a document to you for this analysis is based on many different elements. We hire a consultant to do the body of the work in terms of the data review and the development of the document, and to run scenario analysis for us. We used Echo Northwest for that. They are a common consultant throughout the state of Oregon and have a lot of experience with both of these types of analyses. We appointed a project advisory committee to work on the four different elements: the housing needs, the economic opportunity needs, the public land need, and then the 2023 update. That was comprised of 54 different members through those four project advisory committees. They then did a public engagement process and made decisions and recommendations for the final document based on both the legal framework in which they're working, the local adopted policies, and how this community wants to grow into the future, and then the discretion of what is best for McMinnville. The discretion of what is best for McMinnville is determined by data that is brought to the table for them in terms of trends that we are seeing, both in the marketplace and then historic trends of development here in McMinnville. In terms of public engagement, we had many different project advisory committee meetings, two city council work sessions, a joint city council board of county commissioners' work session, a focus group, open houses, events throughout the community, and then posters, displays that we put out at the library and community center. The Planning Commission hosted public hearings on September 7th and September 21st. We received written testimony from Mark Davis, Friends of Yamhill County, and Thousand Friends. There was also oral testimony provided at the public hearings from Mark Davis, and then from Sid Freeman and Rob Halliburton, representing Friends of Yamhill County. After hearing that testimony and considering the public record and deliberation, the Planning Commission voted unanimously to recommend adoption of the HNA and EOA with that following amendment of removing the 62 acres of park land need, and then pointing out those two other elements for your decision-making process. Those two additional elements for consideration that the Planning Commission voted to bring up to your attention was based on testimony received from Friends of Yamhill County and Thousand Friends of Oregon. We received written testimony outlining approximately 13 issues that they had with the recommended documents. Seven were with the Housing Needs Analysis, three with the Economic Opportunity Analysis, and three with the Buildable Lands Inventory. They alleged that some of the components of the documents were not compliant with state law, and other components, they urged the Planning Commission to reject the project advisory committee's recommendations and to use the state's safe harbors instead. We had Bill Kabeizman, who's with us tonight, he's our contracted legal counsel for land use from Bateman Seidel, to write a memorandum to provide his legal evaluation of the testimony's allegations relative to legal compliance. We then had Beth Goodman with Eco Northwest provide a memorandum detailing the background data that they used for the local attributes and their experience with developing dozens of HNA's and EOA's throughout the state for the allegations of the data. And then staff then synthesized those comments, provided options to the Planning Commission to consider the costs associated with any new directions to pursue, and the staff recommendation. The two elements that were brought to your attention from the Planning Commission are two elements that our legal counsel felt did not have historic precedence in decision-making, in legal decisions, in terms of how it would move forward. So, it was the unknown factor in terms of whether that would move forward successfully or not. And Bill can elaborate on that for you. I went through these with you on October 10th, so I won't do that again, but essentially, the Friends testimony, this itemizes it out. Most of what they said is, their persuasive argument was use the safe harbor. The project advisory commission committee's recommendation was not to use the safe harbor, but to use the actual data from McMinnville in terms of how we develop, and the PC recommended to keep the project advisory committee recommendations, and then highlighted those two elements for you. So, it appears legal under the law, the retail leakage acreage, the acreage associated with the retail leakage, and the acreage associated with the other specific sites, but there is no precedent to how the courts will determine on that. In terms of the Planning Commission, they went through deliberation on all of this, and I walked you through this at the last meeting, but their deliberation was to maintain what has been done thus far, to move forward with the recommendations. There was discussion about updating all the plans and using new data, and the Planning Commission recommended not to do that, and it's not required by law. We had established the precedent for the data we were using. In front of you tonight for decision-making, I was asked by a couple of counselors, what's the process, the path for this project in terms of the decision-making and appeals, and then what could be the potential cost to the city for appeals? So, the process for this is, we will be submitting these, it's very similar to a UGB amendment, so we'll be submitting the documents to the Department of Land Conservation and Development for the director's decision. Anyone who participated locally can submit objections to DLCD within 21 days of the city's dismissal, and the director will take that into account. DLCD can then render a decision to approve or remand the documents back down to the city. That decision can be appealed to the Land Conservation and Development Commission, which is similar to a state planning commission for review. DLCD can also say, the director can say, you know what, we're not going to render a decision on this, we're going to shift it right over to the Land Conservation and Development Commission for them to decide on, and that's treated as an appeal as well. The LCDC, the Land Conservation and Development Commission, must then hold a public hearing within 90 days of receiving that from the DLCD director. We will then, if there is an appeal of the decision to LCDC, the city more than likely will be participating in that appeal process. The LCDC's decision then can be appealed to the Court of Appeals. So, this is what happened with our previous UGB process, and if that happens, we will probably also be participating in that process as well. The potential cost of defending an appeal, we're going to give you sideboards because it's really going to depend on the complexity of the appeal and how much is put in there. But visiting with Bill Kabeizman and others, colleagues of mine, we anticipate it's going to be about $50,000 to $100,000 of legal costs through the Court of Appeals. So, this is to the end, depending on the complexity, and $15,000 to $25,000 of in-kind staff support, again, depending on the complexity. So, that's the two steps of appeals, LCDC and the Court of Appeals. Keep in mind, you have several issues that have been brought up by Friends of Yamhill County and Thousand Friends. There is a history already there of willingness to appeal issues associated with growth planning in Yamhill County and particularly in McMinnville. So, your ordinances, again, just to clarify, you have two ordinances in front of you. Staff is recommending to move forward with one of them. The ordinances have several exhibits associated with them, so the Urbanization Study, the Housing Needs Analysis, which will amend our Comprehensive Plan, the Economic Opportunities Analysis, which will also amend our Comprehensive Plan, Findings of Fact, Conclusionary Findings and Decision Documents, and the repeal of ordinances number 4746 and 4976. Ordinance number 5139, the difference between them is that lends itself to a total land need of 361 acres. It removes the 61 acres from the commercial piece associated with the retail leakage and the other specific sites. And then ordinance number 5141 has a total land need of 422 acres, which retains those 61 acres. The documents associated with each ordinance, the Urbanization Study, the Economic Opportunities Analysis, and the Findings Documents are different for each of those ordinances based on those two changes. Are there any questions?
Counselor Chenoweth.
Can you go back to the slide that shows a dollar amount of potential litigation costs? Is that number, I know you said the cost of defending appeals depending on complexity. So, that's inclusive, the $50,000 to $100,000 is inclusive either way we go?
Yes, I think, by either way, you mean either 5139 or 5141?
Correct.
Yes, but we anticipate that the cost would be less because it would be a little less complex if we don't have to deal with those two issues that are identified differently.
And that's assuming appeal will occur without those two issues.
So, you're saying we'll probably be closer to the 50 on the one and 100 on the other?
Um...
I mean, I'm not trying to pin you down, but I'm just trying to understand what the difference, because in terms of making a decision, at least for me, I need to know what the costs associated with the two choices, how they look differently.
Yeah, and part of it is sort of outside of the city's control.
Right.
In terms of the amount of issues that are raised on appeal, whether the director makes a decision which adds an additional layer, what issues get brought up, and so, a lot of, I suspect that if it is appealed, the history of most appeals of these type of things, the most issues that can are brought up. And so, eliminating two out of 13 brings it down somewhat, but it doesn't eliminate it, you know, isn't necessarily going to eliminate it. So, you know, it really is going to depend a lot on what an appeal looks like, and that's where the uncertainty comes in.
I get that. You know, for those of us that have lived in McMinnville for 40 or so years, we've gone through a few of these processes. I didn't get the joy of, like Kelly Menke did, of doing it from behind the dais, but I did watch it unfold, and it cost us, I think, over a million dollars last time around. And none of us want to go down that path again, so I'm just trying to, you know, I'm really not in favor of paring this down to the 61 acres. I'd like to keep all available acres at this stage of the game because we're going to see efficiencies change these numbers as we go forward. But I want, but if it's going to potentially really increase the risk, then maybe it's the smarter move to take. So, I'm trying to just kind of weigh that.
And I think you identified the two critical issues. One is cost, the other is risk. You know, I don't think there's a one-to-one correlation between we drop these and the costs go in half or something like that. You know, it's, a lot of it is so much out of our control, and the costs could be similar whichever way you go. I do think there is more of a, more definitive on the risk side of it. You know, in the number of issues that Heather talked about, I believe it was 13, 11 of them were fairly straightforward. You know, I've been wrong before, but, you know, we felt pretty comfortable about 11 of them saying that they're going to be upheld. These other two, there just isn't much guidance out there. And so, you know, there's a fair amount of flexibility in putting together EOA's. The question is whether there's this much flexibility, and there's just no real way to provide that guidance. And so, there is more of a risk that if you include those two items in it, that it will be remanded, and you're, you know, then you've got to go back and re-adopt and go through some other things. You know, it cuts out some things, but it just adds to the time and the cost with that.
Okay. And then, Heather, can you give me kind of a ballpark potential property tax revenue loss of losing 61 acres of commercial land?
Oh, my goodness. You didn't prep me for that question. Jennifer, do you?
I mean, if I'm going to compare costs of what's on the table here, I think those are the two costs at hand. We have the potential loss in tax revenue, if we don't have that, 61 acres, and we have the potential loss of revenue in the court if we end up going further in appeal. So, those are the two I'm weighing against each other.
Yeah. So, I don't have that number for you. I mean, it...
Would you say it's close to $100,000?
I think it's safe to say that commercial development generates more tax revenue than housing development, and so, you know, but I can't give you that number. What I can say, though, back to the other discussion, is the million dollars for the previous effort, most of the money embedded in that was captured in the initial request to keep redoing the work and updating different data or changing it for this or that. So, there was a lot of constancy in terms of consultants coming in, staff doing work. It took us years to get through to even submit something, and then a couple of remands back. And so, that money was encumbered in the work and not the legal defense. The legal defense for the previous one was also about, when I talked to Bill about this, he said 50 to 60. I'm conservative, so I pushed it up a little bit, but the previous one was about 55 to 65, if I recall.
So, you don't anticipate either way, we're going to have as much staff this time, work this time around regardless of what happens going forward?
It's hard to say. I mean, it's always hard to say, right?
I do think, as Heather said, it's when you get remanded and have to redo work, and part, I think the sequential review is going to help with that in some very significant ways. But, you know, that's, that cycle of, okay, we've got to start over and do it again, is where you really start getting into the costs.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, I think I've exhausted my... Okay. Well, I think I've exhausted my questions. Thank you.
Thank you. We're going to go to Counselor Menke, and then Gary after that. No, you didn't. I'm sorry. I thought you were leaning in. But I did see you were headed in for your microphone earlier.
I really kind of want to listen to what everybody else has to say, right?
Oh, sorry. Council president.
Yeah, I would definitely be leaning, as I was the other night, to the 5141. I think it's a small cost to pay. We've definitely spent more than that on consultants for various things over the years that I've been on council. And I think the potential tax revenue it could generate for the city to increase service levels for the citizens, not to mention the lack of commercial space currently, and how heavy we've leaned on housing over the last few years. Commercial space is vastly needed, and I think we can make that argument in the courtroom. Those two items equate to 15%. You went the full $125,000. We're going apples to apples. It's about $18,000 to defend those two items, and I think that's $18,000 well spent.
And just to be clear, when you make your decision, it's not a finding of the cost of the legal defense?
Counselor Peralta?
Before I speak, I will speak into the mic.
Thank you so much.
So my question, my first question is, the difference figure of 61 acres in the commercial pot, how does that interact with the underlying maps that we've approved? Like, for example, the three-mile lane area plan is the amount of commercial space and retail space and so on in that area. Is that...
No, that's a great question. So the buildable lands inventory was done based on existing comprehensive plan designations. So it does not take into account the three-mile lane area plan's plan for additional commercial land in that area. So when we go through the land use efficiencies work, that's when we'll make policy decisions of, and you know, as a city, you can make a decision, we want to rezone this acreage over here to commercial or industrial, whatever it is, to meet our land need. And then we go through that actual process to do the rezoning of it, create it, and that then puts more land acreage into commercial land need from that process. I also think we'll be doing the same. So you have an adopted policy document, which will lead you there. You can choose to do more than that if you want to as part of your land use efficiencies. And then we also have a policy document talking about higher density employment on the rest of the industrial land in that area. So I think that's going to remove that industrial land deficit as well.
And based on Counselor Garvin's comments and just essentially my read, the point of this exercise is that we're, and Bill's comments, thank you. The point of this is that we're concerned that the retail leakage analysis and the other needed sites calculated separately from average employment densities analysis are the most likely to be challenged by thousands. Like, they've indicated that they have a problem with those things. You think the other 11 things are easier to resolve or more straightforward, but these two are a sticking point and create some risk.
I guess I would classify it more that they've indicated a number of problems, but these are the two that, when we evaluated, presented the most risk where there wasn't as much known. Some of the other issues, a number of them were just policy issues.
Right. But to understand the difference between the two ordinances, both of them have all 13, or both of them have all 11 problems. The second one has 12 and 13.
Yes, correct.
Okay. That's all I needed to know. Thank you.
Thank you. Additional questions, comments? Counselor Payne, Menke, Gary? If that's all the conversation, I would entertain a motion.
I just want to, I'll point of clarification. So this is a first...
Thank you.
...reading and a second reading. So if it fails on the first reading, meaning if it doesn't get a unanimous vote on the first reading...
Then it'll need to come back at a subsequent meeting.
In a subsequent meeting.
And we'll be scheduling an additional city council meeting because if it doesn't, if it's not unanimous on the first reading, do we need two more council meetings? You only have one more council meeting before I need to submit this to the state.
And the two readings have to be a minimum of 24 hours apart, if I remember correctly. So it's not a, there's...
Yeah.
So, well, this is the first meeting, and then we need one more meeting, right?
So if it's not unanimous, you will need another meeting. You know, assuming one of these ordinances gets approved non-unanimously, you're going to have to come back for a second meeting. But that's, you know, and assuming it gets approved then, you're done.
So with a vote at the December 12th meeting, that'll be fine. Add it to that meeting.
I'd like to make a motion.
Please.
I'd like to move ordinance that we pass ordinance 41, 5141.
Second. Thank you. I have a motion from Counselor Chenoweth to consider the first reading of ordinance number 5141, and a second from Counselor Payne. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Is this a roll call vote?
It should be.
No.
Okay.
Aye.
We could do a roll call vote if you prefer.
I was out of order. I apologize.
That's all right. I think we can, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, say nay.
Nay.
No.
All right. And ordinance number 5141 has passed on a first reading of four to two.
Just to clarify, it is passed forward and will receive a first reading in a moment.
Yes. Thank you for the clarity. Would you like to take over and do the first reading at this point then?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Ordinance number 5141, an ordinance adopting the November 2023 McMinnville Urbanization Report and updating the McMinnville Comprehensive Plan, volume one, by adopting the November 2023 McMinnville Housing Needs Analysis and the November 2023 McMinnville Economic Opportunities Analysis, and repealing ordinances number 4746 and 4976.
Thank you. Is there any additional council discussion at this time? I would now ask for a motion to pass ordinance number 5141 to a second reading.
So moved.
Okay.
I have a motion from Counselor Chenoweth and a second from Council President Garvin. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, say nay.
Nay.
The motion passes with dissent. Ordinance number 5141 passes with a vote of four to two on its first reading, and will be brought back for a second reading on December 12.
Do we need to take action on 5139?
No, we do not.
No, we do not. Thank you. I will now adjourn the council meeting at 8:34 PM. Thank you all so much for coming.